Good morning, Mayor, Council, and Directors. I'm grateful to be here with you as we kick off the fiscal year 2023-2024 budget process with Visioning Session. I would also like to welcome Chantel Seymour. She's back to help us, guide us as we determine what we want San Marcos to look like going forward. We've taken a different approach to this year's process in order to clearly connect visioning to our budget. This will help ensure our team is working together collaboratively to establish shared goals and outcomes so that we can put in place the funding and resources necessary to successfully implement these goals. The overarching theme of this current year's budget was our employees, and I appreciate that all Council supported us in helping to approve and provide for the most essential part of our organization. In fact, next month, the contract for the compensation study is scheduled to come for Council approval. In addition, we have assembled a committee of directors to work on this effort, including factoring in responses received from our employee engagement survey. As we begin working on this budget process and visioning session, I propose that this next budget focus on core services. We will continue our commitment to supporting our employees as they are an essential part of providing those services. Our goal is to root this year's visioning in the reality of how we meet community needs based on the following criteria: budget and tax rate, the CIP, core services, Council priorities, community survey results. So we have multiple presenters and quite a bit of information to share with you this morning. The first half of the day will begin with presentations on the fundamentals of budget from Finance Director John Locke, an overview of the capital improvement program from Engineering CIP Director Sean Condor, and debt and bonds from Financial Advisor Dan Wedmiller. The intent for the opening the day with this information is to directly connect the visioning process with the feasibility of successfully operationalizing goals with respect to our budget planning process. This visioning session sets the stage for the FY24 budget. Typically, we like to get through presentations before we receive questions, but given the increased quantity of information, we have incorporated time to pause and open the floor up for questions between segments of the presentations. After we receive an update on where we are financially, we will introduce the draft strategic goals and outcomes that were put together as a starting point for Council discussion. These draft goals were developed by reviewing and brading together multiple past Council staffed community input processes. I think it's important that every city employee is able to look at this document and see how their work contributes to the shared vision for the community. In addition, we already have the comprehensive plan, a number of master plans, and other guiding documents that have been put together through hundreds of hours of community input. These draft goals and outcomes also take those into account. In order to compile our draft plan, we pulled parts of our comprehensive plan, master plans, strategic initiatives, and budget requests while being conscious of honoring our prior Council direction. It is anticipated many of the strategic initiatives identified in the past years would carry over as strategies in this updated plan. Our goal is to merge requests that we have received from Council as well as our community. This afternoon, we will break into groups in order to discuss how our goals align with our goal statements, as well as how the outcomes align with the goals. Our goal is to leave tomorrow with a strategic plan that has four to five goals with goal statements, as well as outcomes that fall under each of those goals. That is the policy aspect decided by you, Council, as policymakers. Staff then go and operationalize those outcomes and determine the appropriate strategies to make them a reality. Our intent is to report on that progress by including them on all of your agenda request forms, providing quarterly reports, and having a dedicated website that has a status update to inform our community. We appreciate your willingness to join us and hope this will be a collaborative experience for us all to work together as a team to establish our shared goals and community vision. I am very proud to have this wonderful set of professionals around the room. A lot of times, just as you, Mayor, say, "Hey, you're doing a good job," people will tell me that, and I say, "You know what? I don't do anything by myself." It takes this wonderful team and all the teams under them to do this, and I've got a great set of advisors that help me in their respective areas and help me by shedding light on the things that they know most and that they have experience and expertise in. So I'm very proud and very thankful to have this wonderful team here to support all of us as we move forward today. The last thing I want to do is I want to make sure that I spend a little bit of time just really saying a lot of thanks and gratitude to Hayden Miebel, Carrie Fontenot, our IT team, our wonderful IT team who's here to support us, our communications team, which I know they're thinking of us and probably going to be watching this later, but for Lauren Surley for taking over and helping us through that, and also our Speaker Clerk's office. In addition, Sean Condor, Director of CIP and Engineering, as well as John Locke. They put together a lot of time and effort towards getting us here today, and the director's team has looked at the strategic plan and all of the materials that will be presented today to make sure that it's something that we all feel like we can get behind and support you. And support you the best that we can to make these things successful and be able to move forward.
Also, if you've got a question, if you remember the slide number, it would be helpful. Not required, but it would be helpful.
So as we mentioned, we'll get started with this one where it talks about the roles and responsibilities for today. It's just that really, you know, we're going to go through kind of the fundamentals of budgets and CIP like we talked about, but we're going to really spend the most time talking about the document that we shared with you last Friday, where it has the vision and the goals and the outcome statements and objectives. And so that's kind of where we see that we want to make sure that the SAC capture your intent, right? And then that's the policy aspect of this, and then for staff, it's going to be for us to go back and put together those strategies. And some of it may come from your prior strategic initiatives and things that we'll look at to try to make sure we carry forward. So then you, as Council, will be looking at, and it's going to be high level. It won't be every single step-by-step thing we're going to do, but you'll get to see the overarching parts of how staff intends to address those different areas. So just wanted to make sure we shared that. Are there any questions about that before we get started?
Just where the comp plan falls into this.
So the comp plan is what we did is when we came up with the strategic goals and the vision statement, those were taken directly from the comp plan.
The draft.
The draft comp plan, as well as some of the prior strategic plans and so, and master plans. So like the parks master plan, some of the language came out of there, the downtown, the parks master plan, transportation. So we tried to make sure we were taking some of the things specifically in those adopted plans and using that same verbiage to carry forward, again, trying to honor prior adopted policy that Council's done and the community input processes that our community members have put forward in making those plans happen. So does that help to answer that question?
All right, let's get started. We're going to start with John Locke.
All right, good morning, everyone. My name's John, I'm Finance Director, and there are a few slides that I'll go through. This is the agenda of what we're going to cover. We're going to start off by discussing the budget calendar, then look at some economic and demographic metrics, some peer review with benchmarking so we can see some different numbers and how we compare to our peer cities. We'll do a major operating fund overview, and this is from a very high level. Ms. Reyes mentioned core services, so we'll discuss a little bit about what we have to do. And then Sean will talk about funding the capital improvement program. We have our financial advisor that will be here a little bit later, and he'll discuss debt 101 and even a little about a bond election. Just to start off with the budget calendar, this actually in our city charter, this is one of those required things that we need to do to kick off the budget. Council's strategic planning and visioning has to occur by the end of January. So we're here today, and between this meeting and our next meeting, which will occur in February when we do a budget policy workshop, Council will create the vision or that the city manager will use to make sure that the budget that we're going to submit for FY24 follows the vision that the City Council has for it. After the budget policy adoption, there'll be several workshops. As you can see, there's a workshop scheduled in May and June. We will ultimately, and up to that point, we will be working off of a preliminary tax rule. We've received preliminary numbers from the appraisal district in April, and we don't receive a certified rule until July. In the general fund, property tax is the second-largest revenue source, so that's why we can't submit that, the budget, until after we get that certified rule and we have more firm numbers to make sure that there's, if any adjustments are necessary, we're able to do that before we submit the budget to the City Council. City Council will set the maximum proposed tax rate on August 15th as well. That just creates a ceiling that when Council ultimately sets the tax rate, that we won't be able to exceed. And there will be two more budget workshops scheduled after the budget is presented to City Council. There are one on August 15th and then another on 17th if needed. The last two meetings are the readings of the tax rate ordinance and the budget ordinance, and it's also when we have public hearings. We'll have two public hearings so that the public can share their insights on the budget and the tax rate. The next few slides, just take a look at some of the economic indicators in the area. And this first slide is unemployment. It starts in 2018, a couple of years before COVID hit, so you can definitely see the impact of COVID in 2020 and the recovery period afterwards. One of the neat things to see for San Marcos is we are green, the green color, and you can see that we are, we've recovered back to the area where our lowest point was pre-COVID. And it looks like from a state level, the state hasn't recovered quite as well. They're about at that same point, and nationally, the national numbers have recovered as well back to pre-COVID numbers. When building a budget, one of the big factors is inflation, and especially over the past couple of years, inflation has had a really big impact. I'm sure that'll, I'm sure many of you can attest to this in your home budgets. I'm sorry. I'm sure many of you can attest to this in your home budgets, and it impacts the city just as well. And you can see, you know, on average, inflation is anywhere between 2% and 3%. And the last two years, it's really shot up. You have 11% and 8% over the past two years. Over the term of from 2013 to 2022, total inflation during that period is 36%, and that really impacts the city's buying power and our ability to provide those core services to residents. And there's a slide a little later that will touch on that a little deeper. This slide just shows the city's population. It goes back to 2010. The last three years are just estimated. We've been experiencing about 2% growth, so if we continue along those lines, we expect to be up around 74,000. So we, going back to 2010, we've grown from 45,000 to an estimated 75,000. And there's a slide coming up a little later that shows how many employees that we have to help service the population. And here it is. So if you look in 2010, this slide is showing how many employees we have per 1,000 population. And this can be used as a measure of the, one measure of the city's ability to provide services to our residents. So in 2010, we had just over 12 employees per 1,000 residents, and you can tell over the, through 2015, that that number was declining, and we rebounded some. And so in 2023, we're back to the point that we were in 2010. So we're back at just over 12 FTEs per 1,000 population. And it's something this slide doesn't show is the additional services that the city has taken on in providing residents. Just as a couple of examples, in parks, we have more than doubled the park acreage that we maintain now. Back in 2010, it was 1,100 acres, and today it's 2,500 acres that parks maintain. We also have a new discovery center that takes employees to provide services through the discovery center. Also, when we crossed over 50,000 population, the staff had to take over the traffic signals on the state routes. So these are just some examples of the additional services. I'm sure that we could go around the room and all the departments could share even more examples of the additional services that we're providing, and we're doing that with the same ratio of employees to population as what we had in 2010. This is just an important metric to watch because at some point, you know, service degradation can kick in, and then you begin to lose your ability to provide services to the residents. One of the big factors, something that that slide does not show, that slide assumes that we're at full strength, and we know this is something that we discussed during the budget process, that that isn't the case. The city has experienced some increased turnover, and what this slide shows is the impact of turnover from 2016 through the end of fiscal year 2022. And you can see the increase. The top row is the non-civil service, and you can see that those, the percent of turnover went from 15% to 21% in 2022. When you're looking citywide, it went from 13% to 18%. And looking at civil service, which is the both police and fire, it increased from 5% to 9% during that same time period. So if we were to go back and adjust the slide that we just covered for those vacancies, then we would be providing those services to even less employees per 1,000. I mentioned a little earlier the impact that inflation has on the city's buying power, and that's what this slide depicts. If you look at 2010, what this is showing, the slide in general is just showing the expenditures per capita. So in 2010, we were spending $3,200 per capita, and the darker color is the per capita. The blue is the expenditures adjusted for inflation, with 2010 being that base year. So in 2010, the adjusted for inflation is the same amount, it's $3,200. As you move forward, and you can especially see the jump in 2022 and 2023, like on that inflation chart when inflation really jumped up, you can see that the per capita in 2023 budget is $4,100. When you adjust the impact inflation for that time period, we're actually only spending $2,800 per capita. So we're actually spending less money per capita today than what we were in 2010, adjusted for inflation.
That's important. I'm just going to chime in a little bit is because I think that we try to tell our story and let Council know that, hey, it's really difficult sometimes as we're asked to do more things. It's hard for us to kind of explain it, and so trying to have some information that not only helps to tell Council and inform you of the things that we struggle with in terms of the financial constraints sometimes, in turn, we also want to make sure that we can inform the public, and you can help inform the public as they're, you know, talking with you about what some of these things are. And so that's our goal with this, is to try to make sure that we're able to better inform our Council and our public in regard to how their city government is functioning and what some of the struggles and constraints that we have as a government in providing services for everyone. So just wanted to make sure that I just kind of emphasized that point.
And thank you for visualizing this data. Sometimes if you have to be an accountant, you look at this spreadsheet, like, what am I looking at? So thank you for visualizing these things.
But that's the danger of us sending it out early is because the slides don't stand on their own. It takes the talking points to connect everything together, but we are hoping to do more educational type of things where we can, you know, maybe put things on our YouTube channel or, you know, do some YouTube shorts or some sort of something like that, just to help inform the public a little bit more about their city government and how funds are utilized and how, what these constraints are.
This slide shows our tax-supported debt per capita, so this would just be the debt that the city has issued for capital projects and that the general fund repays. And you can see from 2010 through 2018, that amount was decreasing, and then it starts to increase through 2023. This is just an important slide. As we're discussing capital projects today, there are two components to the tax rate, and they're somewhat competing with one another. There's the operations side that we have to provide those core services, and there's the debt side that we use to fund capital projects. And there's a couple of slides that will explain in a little more detail coming up. This was one of those points that we're just going to pause and see if the City Council had any questions. What we're going to get into now is some benchmarking with our peer cities. Before we get into it, it's important to note that there are bookends on this. You have Austin that is obviously much more populated than the city, and then if you have the other side, you have the Kingdom. And when we start to compare ourselves, we look for more the middle range, the average range as we're comparing ourselves. So this is just a list of our peer cities, and it's as small as 30,000 and as large as 900,000. One of the things that we look at is the median household income in the different cities. This slide surprised me. I didn't realize that San Marcos would be at the lowest median income. So our median income is 42,500, and the highest is in Sugar Land, it's 123,000 median household income. The average across all of our peer cities is 71,000. When you look at the home values across our peer cities, the average is 251,000, and San Marcos is 201,000. And, you know, the spread goes anywhere from a low of 149,000 up to 381,000. Looking at the employees per 1,000 population, and this slide has a lot going on, so I want to take a little bit of time to describe what it is. There are actually, well, there's three different colors. On all the peer city slides, San Marcos will be green, just so that it stands out. The darker color are those cities that have a municipally-owned electric utility. Just to point out, there are cities such as in Broffels, they don't operate that in-house. It's outside, so that's why they're not in the darker color. And then, so the blue is just those other peer cities that don't have the in-house electric utility. So this, and the reason that's important is the electric utility is a, there's only seven, 70 cities statewide that have electric utility that they operate, and just internal to San Marcos, that adds 70 employees. So it's important to keep that in mind when you compare these. So looking at employees per thousand, the average is 10.74. If you look at just the average of those cities that have an electric utility, it's 12.6, so we're pretty much on par on average with those other cities. Expenditures per capita is a similar thing. When you have the electric utility, it's additional expenditures, and for the city of San Marcos, that's about a $65 million budget that it adds. So looking at this, we have a low of 2,000 per capita and a high of 7,000. The average across all of them is just under 4,000. San Marcos is at 4,300, which is under the average for those cities that have an electric utility. The average per capita for those cities with electric utility is just under 4,900. At this point, we're just going to go into a very high level of the operating funds, and I think I stopped a little bit too soon before. I know we covered a couple more slides. Were there any questions about those peer city slides?
Actually, if I can just point out, it's kind of odd how Waco kind of right, they're double the population. Is that something special they're doing, or how does that apply?
Yeah.
Per capita. Now go ahead and ask your question.
But I'm just curious how, I'm sorry, that stands out to me, that just double the population is still massive.
As close as they are to the.
Yes, ma'am. That really goes on my head.
Yeah, and the only thing that comes to mind that Waco has that's different is that they have Zoo. They have Zoo that they operate, so I don't know how that may have impacted our operating plan.
Thank you.
The first fund is the primary fund of the city's budget. It accounts for all of the core government services that the city provides that aren't required to be accounted for in a separate fund, like our enterprise funds or a special revenue fund. The primary revenue source in the general fund is sales tax and property tax combined. Two of those make up 70% of the operating budget of the general fund. It's an example of some of the services that the general fund provides, you know, public safety or police and fire support, parks and recreation, neighborhood enhancement programs, and of course, the capital improvement program. This is an overview of our general fund budget. The total revenue budget is $96.7 million. We touched on the two primary revenue sources already, sales tax and property tax. Sales tax is the largest revenue source. It brings in 40% of our total revenue. On the expense side, our expense budget is $108 million in FY23. Especially in the general fund, the general fund is a service-oriented fund, and the biggest cost is people. It takes people to provide those services. So you see the personnel cost is the largest cost in the general fund at 63% of the total budget. There are also some one-time and non-recurring expenses, so for capital outlay and things of that nature, that is $8.2 million. And I bring that up because that accounts for the reason that expenses are budgeted over revenue. It's not a recurring expense that would be budgeted that way. And the city also invests in social services and art funding as well, so you can see that that is listed on the slide. So with that FY23 budget, that doesn't include everything that the department requested. There wasn't enough capacity, enough resources within the general fund to fund all the department's requests, and what this slide shows are the items that didn't make it into the budget. In total, there were $4.4 million of requests that the departments had that did not make it into the budget. And just breaking those down. And just breaking those down into operating and personnel requests, there were 48 positions that were requested and there were eight different operating packages that were requested. So you can see a breakout there from fire with 24 positions to finance with a half above position that was requested, that there just wasn't enough resources to make it into FY '23 budget. This slide shows that there are certain things that impact or that come off the top with the city's primary revenue sources before we can even use it for operations. And before we go into this slide a little deeper, I just wanted to mention that at the budget policy statement, we're going to provide some additional detail and reporting on where we're at right now with our economic incentive agreements, as well as with the TERS and the TRIS will provide some additional detailed information on that meeting of that. What this slide is showing is, when you look at the city's two primary revenue sources for the general fund, the property tax and sales tax, in total, that's just shy of $87 Before you get to operations, you have to make your debt service payments. That's paid for those capital improvement programs, projects that the city has already engaged in and we're repaying over a amount of time. So that $12.4 million is reduced. All that value that's captured in the TERS and the TRIS, the total of that in terms of revenue is $5.8 million. So that gets reduced from what we have to operate on. The economic incentive agreements, those Chapter 380 agreements that we have, the total value of that is $2.1 million. And what's left is for operations. So we begin with the 87 million and we end with about $66.5 million that we have to provide those core services. This slide shows how our sales tax collections have grown over the year and it also breaks it out between what we refer to as our base and then our outlet collections. And the 2023 is forecasted, right now, we're forecasting in that $39.6 million. So you can see it's grown significantly from 2017 when it's at 27 million. What it's also showing is that as the city is diversifying, it is less reliant on the outlet. Sales tax was a really great thing. The green in the background is the percent that our, our sales tax collections that are made up of the outlets. So in 2023, that is around 22.5%. And if you go back to 2017, it's over 30%. So that's definitely a difference. A little earlier, I mentioned that there are two components to our tax rate, the operations piece and the debt piece. So the operations of our total tax rate is 60.3 cents. The operations component of that is just over 42 cents and the debt component is 17.7 cents. So with the operations, that's where we provide our core services. That's where we provide public safety and quality of life for residents. All the strategic planning that city council is going to do over the next couple of days and any kind of special programs that city council wants the city to provide citizens, as well as investing in employees, all of that comes from the operations side of our tax rate. The capital improvement program, all those capital projects, that gets funded with the debt component of our tax rate. One thing that's important when you look at the tax rate is the, the tax rate is made up of more than just the cities of San Marcos. We have the total tax rate that residents will pay is $2.04 for $100 of valuation. And what this chart does is it breaks that down. So when you look at every dollar of property tax that is paid, 55 cents of that goes to the school district. 29 cents of that comes to the city of San Marcos. Hays County receives 14 cents and the county special program district hits about 10 cents. So of that total, $2.05 for $100 valuation, only 60 cents of that is the city of San This slide just shows a historical representation of what our tax rate has been, both from the operations and that the blue is operations and the gray is the debt component of the tax rate. And you can tell how as inflation has impacted us in providing new services, how the blue is starting to increase and that is squeezing off what money is available for the capital projects, the great, the great side of the tax rate. And it also shows what our total tax rate has been. So you can see that we were, in 2011, we're at 53 cents and in 2017 to 18, we jumped up to 61 cents. That was for a bond election. And now we're down at 60 cents. We've been there for the past two years.
Question. The Water World Extension, isn't that a big component of the debt in that early 2010s?
I don't know necessarily if that was the full reason for it, but what I can tell you back in that timeframe is that the council made a concerted effort because we had so much of our property tax rate that was debt-focused, that they said, we want more to go to operations. So that's where the shift happened and that's where you're starting to see that. But I don't know for sure, Councilmember Prather, if that is due to the Water World Drive Extension, say. I think if we were to go back even like 2010 and prior, because it was even before 2007, the debt's still higher than operations. So I think that's just the way we were spending the tax rate at that time and now there's been that policy shift. So we've moved more towards operation-focused and less towards debt. But as we'll talk about, especially in Mr. Condor's presentation, is just that, you know, we as a city government have pressure to do the core services, but we also have pressure to do the projects. And so we're trying to figure out how to prioritize and make sure that we're able to
This is just another way to look at that. It breaks it out by percent so that you can see that on a percentage basis, how much the city has been using towards operations compared to debt. So we were at 60-40 in 2011 and we're just over 70-30 in 2023. This slide shows the breakout of the tax rate compared to our benchmark cities, the peer cities that we compare ourselves to. And the average for operations is 62% when you look across all the cities and City San Marcos is there at 71%. So on average, our peer cities spend more on debt than what the city of San Marcos does.
And the other thing I will mention that I was thinking about before 2010, there was a time even where we had some staff funded out of debt. Our CIP and engineering team was funded and they were being charged for the project. And so then we made a change also to break them back into general fund and not do that. So that's another thing that I was remembering historically.
I know this graph is a little small and smaller than we'd like it to be. And it's important to get both of these graphs on the same slide because it helps tell a story. On the left-hand side, that is our tax rate compared to our peer cities. And you can tell that we are the fourth highest tax rate across all of our peer cities. The average tax rate is just over 50 cents and City San Marcos is at 60 cents. What is on the right is the median annual tax. And so by median, it's taken off the high and the low. It's just finding that middle amount instead of the average amount. So when you look at that, the median tax is $1,200, which is right where the city of San Marcos is. And the reason for that, if you remember back a few slides, when that median home value that the city of San Marcos was on the lower end of that, our tax rate is higher because the values are lower. And, you know, that's, that's one of the good things, you know, that economic incentive agreements help. It helps diversify that tax base so that the residents aren't taking up so much of Our next largest fund is the electric utility fund. Of course, it accounts for all the operation and maintenance of the electric utility. The primary revenue source are the user charges charged for an electric service and it supports everything with purchasing and the distribution of electricity. It has a $65 million revenue budget with the electric service being the primary revenue source. And the purchase of power is by far the largest expense to the electric utility. It makes up over 50% of the total cost. And our water and wastewater fund, it accounts for the operations and maintenance of the water and wastewater system. The primary revenue source is the user charges for the water and wastewater service and it supports everything related to water and wastewater infrastructure in the system. Our total budget for water and wastewater is just under $58 million. Broken down, water services make up just under $31 million of that and wastewater is $21 million of it. When you look at our total expenses, our $58 million and the largest expense in this fund is the debt service. That is for those capital projects that the city has undertaken and that makes up 36% of the total budget in water and wastewater. We also have our contracted services that make up 28% of the operating budget and that is the cost to run the water treatment plants and wastewater plant. Our stormwater utility fund, it is established to account for all the expenses related to stormwater management and that's the revenue source that are, the revenue source are the rates charged to customers for the management of the stormwater. It supports all the city-owned drainage and infrastructure and the street sweeping operations, as well as the capital improvement program, which I missed on the prior two slides of all of these operating funds. Commonality across the model is that they're managing operations and capital improvement programs as the general fund does. The budget in the stormwater fund is $8.8 million and it's just comprised of those stormwater utility fees. The largest expense is the debt service from the capital programs of $4.3 million. It's almost 50% of the budget in the stormwater fund. And the final fund that covers our hotel tax fund, it accounts for that local occupancy tax the city charges of 9%. There's the regular occupancy tax of 7% and the venue tax of 2%, which is for the conference center. It supports all of our tourist development activities, not all, but most of the tourist development activities, downtown revitalization, some signature events and the arts, as well as the, any kind of capital improvements related to hotel occupancy. The total budget in the hotel tax fund is just over $4 million and the hotel and venue tax make up the majority of that. Total expenses is $4.9 million with the operating costs being over half of that budget. Personnel make up 21% of the total. That is the end of this section. At the end, I have any further questions you may have?
Slide 25. It shows revenue of 96 and expenses of 108. That looks like it's off balance. Tell me where the balance is.
The biggest, it's all one-time related expenses. In addition to the, where you see the one-time non-returning expenses of $8.2 million, which is a capital outlay and the city council may recall authorizing staff to move the money to the city hall that fund balance in excess of 45%. There was just shy $7 million in total that got moved. In addition to that, the employee retention incentives, that was about $2.5 million in total. That was a one-time expense. It's not a recurring expense and so that makes up the difference.
Okay. Just for the public, is that slide looks a little?
It does. Thank you for that.
Okay. And also, do we have a slide that shows the increase in our tax base over the last X number of years?
And this recently?
Oh, I just want to make sure I didn't miss it. And that's all I have. Thanks, John. And, you know, one thing that we are going to ask at the end of the day, Mayor and Council, is, you know, we are wanting to provide just a very high-level fundamentals of budget, but when we get into budget policy, as Mr. Locke talked about, we will be going into more detail regarding the economic development in TERS amounts. But then also, we're going to ask you, hey, is there something else that you would like to see as we prepare for budget policy? So we make sure we give you all the information that you need to be able to go through that day as successfully as possible. And any information that y'all have and y'all have been, you know, asked about or that y'all had questions about, we're open to making sure the presentation is good for you and it provides the information you need. So just wanted to emphasize that. So be thinking if there are things that you see throughout the day that you don't see throughout the day that you would like to see, because we are going to ask that question at the end of the session. I think I don't have a meeting today, but maybe tomorrow. Anything further? Anybody need a break or anything? Because I know Mr. Condor is ready to get started if we're not. Want to roll? Let's roll.
All right. So I'm Sean Condor, I'm the Director of Millionaire Capital Provenance. And I'm going to try and give you guys a nice overview of the capital improvements program in the world. Less from a financial point of view, maybe more from a millionaire point of view, so hopefully they'll see something a little different. So as far as the agenda goes, I'm going to do an introduction to the CIP. I'm going to cover the historic numbers. And we'll go into a little bit of detail on the factors that impact the project. I want to try and link the CIP to the budgets and then we'll take a little pause for questions. And then I'll go into an overview of each fund and then talk about some CIP goals, challenges, strategies. So what is the capital improvements program? It's a multi-year financial planning tool used to identify and plan for major capital projects. It addresses road, transportation, public safety, utility infrastructure, issues in conjunction with goals and priorities that's determined by city council. The adoption of the CIP in its first year funding comes size of the adoption of the budget. It uses a 10-year projection. So thanks, I want you to focus in on planning tool. It's a fluid document. It does not change every year, so it changes, in fact, it changes weekly sometimes. It's usually to help plan out our future, plan the things we need to do, plan the stuff that has to occur. The other key point is the first year of funding. That's all we're approving on the funding. The other nine years are how we project out when we can do the stuff, when the things need to occur. Can we afford to do what we need to do? Talking a little bit more about that first year. We make sure each project is valued against project readiness, staff workload and city's ability to fund the project. And what that means is, we don't want to push a project forward a year in the first year of CIP unless it's ready to go. Is the design ready to go? Do we have the right of way? Do we have the property for the facility we need to build? Things like that. So we evaluate that before we move it forward. Staff workload. We have staff that has to touch each one of these projects and push them forward. The important things to do is, do they have the capacity to do it? Or if we produce funding, is it just going to sit there and not get touched around six months or 12 months? If so, we're going to push it out a year until staff's ready to deal with this project. City's ability to fund a project. This is what the conversations that's coming up now is. is we're getting tight on our ability to, we have no debt capacity. And so if we can't fund these projects, we don't need to move forward. We need to push it forward in the years in the CIP until we can fund it. In years past, the ability to fund a project hasn't been at the forefront as it is today. In the past, it was more project readiness and staff workload that dictated when a project created in the CIP, but as it is now, we kind of, we're able to put that constraint ourselves in term labor, do the CIP. It's getting to the point where we're going to need some additional input on how we're going to constrain that CIP. So I want to take a little bit of time on this slide and try and create an analogy between the CIP and your home. A lot of folks don't necessarily understand what a capital improvements program is. So these, what you think about it is your house. You own a home, you have some big projects you need to do like add a room or roof or even replace a roof. You can't just say, I'm going to do that five years. You need to lay that out. In order to lay that out, you've got to look at your revenue stream, your expense stream, which we call it our debt models is how we do it. So when you think about your revenue, that's your salary. You know, you might have an annual, you might be a salary employee, so your paycheck is consistent every month. Your spouse might be part-time or hourly, so their, their revenue goes like this. Well, we have the same problem on the city side. You might have your electric rates, but some people, they turn that ECF in the summer and so we lose income in the winter. You have operation costs, which are utility bills. You know, you have a phone bill, it's pretty straight every month, so that's easy to model. For your electric bill again, it goes up and down based off the time of the year. Your maintenance costs, those are things like you know you have to do every month, like replace the air filter. And you have some things you don't know. You have the budget for those things you don't know. Now you've got your debt payment, such as your car and your house payment. This is where it kind of ties into the CIP. You know you have a car payment that will fall off in, you know, maybe three, four, five years and what do you do with that excess cash you were putting towards it? Your house payment is going to be a longer payment, it might not fall off anytime soon. That, that payment sometimes fluctuates if you have your interest rate or your, you have a balloon payment, mid-wraps, or you have your house insurance, it will impact that. So what we do, we talk with the CIP, is we lay all that out in the debt model, which is really just a fancy spreadsheet. And it tells us when we have the dips in our debt and we're able to bring on more debt or talk, puts our salary, talks about how we're going to increase our income moving forward. And that tells us what we can afford. So now that we know when and what we can afford, now we have to look at our CIP is when do we need to do stuff? You know, a roof, you might want to do that every 20 years. Paint your house on New York five years. A car, you might replace it over 10. So you lay all those differences out and you want to make sure you don't stack those vague expenses in one year because one, you can't afford it and two, you probably don't have the capacity to manage all that stuff. So that's kind of what the capital improvements program is, an analogy of a home. So what is a capital improvements project? It's a major capital project generally involves a significant expenditure of funds beyond the operation and maintenance costs for the acquisition or construction of a needed facility or structure. Should exceed $50,000 in cost. And, and same markets, typical source projects are mostly from other departments, but they come from their word. Master plans are probably one of the biggest contributors. You have a lot of projects in CIP, either from the water wastewater master plans or electric master plans, fire station master plan, operations request. You know, the water department's going out of this neighborhood because water main keeps breaking and say, hey, we'll keep patching up, you need to get in that CIP because we need to get replaced pretty soon. Council direction, back in 2015, floods devastated the city. That's been a big push for all these drainage projects occurred after that, those floods. Citizen input, wall situation, we, we went to a public meeting for a water wastewater project and they came back and they brought up their tension that, hey, we have some drainage issues we need to work out here. We looked at it, well, you know, we updated that CIP project to include that drainage So the big thing to think about is why, when it goes in CIP, it's really, it's too big for city staff. So when you look at the different types of work, you know, like a pot hole, that's something that our in-house crews need typically address. When we talk about replace the road, that's something that you're going to put in the CIP. A main break, that's something our operation guys could do. Replace the main, that's going to be on the CIP. Replace a local lift station, operation maintenance. Replace entire lift station, CIP. Replace a, repair a leaking, leak, water leak in the building, operation maintenance, new building, CIP. And so just to slow down a little bit on this slide, think about if you have a dryer. You buy a dryer, typical life expectancy of 10 years, right? So it's come along, you've had it five years, you say, hey, we need to replace this dryer. Let's put it, you know, if we think we get another 10 more years out, let's put it in the CIP. But then all of a sudden, heating element goes down. Say, oh wait, man, we thought we were going to make this last, this thing's going down, but we need to reboot it in the CIP. That's kind of how we kind of relay it, we know where you can fix it and patch it till we get to where you replace it. So what are the funding sources of the capital improvements program? The main, you know, we have the general fund, which is paid for on the property sales tax and the licensing for our management. We have stormwater fund, which is funded out of stormwater utility. You have the electric fund, which pays for electric rates. You have the water wastewater funds, which comes from water wastewater rates and impact fees. We have external funding sources such as grants, you know, use some water development board money or maybe we'll use some campbell funded projects as well, stuff like that. So let's look at the CIP over the years. You go back to 2017, our averages have been about $55 million. You see there's a couple of spikes there in 2019 and 2021. That's the ARWA, the expansion of our water system. So when you take those peaks out, it really gives us a pretty flat average of about $46 million. So we've been spending since 2017, consistent amount of funding, right around $46 million. What that tells us is, as John said, inflation went up, but our CIP stayed flat. So this project on the slide, I'm going to spend a little bit of time on it because I want to try and give you the mindset of what goes into CIP, why it takes so long, what impacts the project's ability to get done quickly and cost effect, and the cost effect of management. So we talk about the scope of projects. Water mains are going to be one of the more easier projects. When you think about, when somebody comes to us and says, hey, we need to replace the water main, it's typically, it's, it's pressure fed, which means that you go up, down, left, right, around any kind of place. So you don't have to worry about other utilities. You can typically put it in the road. Wastewater main, you're typically replacing that in place. The problem is it's gravity fed, which means you can't put bins in it. So your line is firm and so if you run into a gas main or a form pipe, you're going to have to replace that utility to get around it. Stormwater projects are by far the most difficult to estimate upfront because of a water and a wastewater main, I mean, we can look at our master plan to tell us what size to go with. On stormwater, we have to do a design, determine our drainage area and so we don't know the size of the pipe until we've started the design. So what we thought might be a 48-inch pipe ends up being a 60-inch pipe. On top of that, stormwater, you're putting new pipe in the ground. So there's a good chance you're going to have to move that water main and that wastewater main just to fit that stormwater in. And on top of that, to get it to drain to the curb entrance, you're going to have to replace the road and rebuild the driveways and rebuild the curving area. So although it seems like it should be a simple project, now you've added all these extra components just to complete the main pass for the project, which is the storm and stormwater. Street reconstruction sidewalks, those typically, the challenge of those is you have a lot of public input. Folks don't care about what's underground, outside, out of mind. Stuff on the surface, they can see and they have opinions on what needs to be done. So we have to make sure to take that input into consideration and get that, those thoughts and, and those opinions and think about what's happening against the design.
You know, I mentioned like the home example and they use this with our citizens all the time, like waters, sewer lines, they don't see it outside, out of mind, just like when your home, let's say you want to build a new shower, you don't really care about the water, sewer line, you just want to make sure the shower works. The only thing you really notice is the tile. And you know, it's the same thing with our residents, like, hey, y'all just fixed that road five years ago, why y'all tearing up the asshole to do something again? Well, outside of that.
Exactly, yeah. And so definitely it makes an impact, especially when they don't like what we're promoting. Water stations, water towers and lift stations, those projects, the big component of those is typically going to be maintaining operations. You know, you can't shut down a lift base and replace it. You've got to have enough space to maintain current services while you build it in. Overhead electrics, the challenge of those is really, those really come quick because we're typically replacing in place and we're, they happen so fast, that's part of the problem. They get in and out and they don't know it. The challenge of those is really, most of the overhead work is associated with, like a stormwater project or wastewater project, we have to move it to account for installing that utility. Underground electric, in my opinion, is going to be the most difficult and the most challenging project because those have to go to the house. We talk about a water or wastewater project, we're stopping at the product line. Underground electric, we're cutting through people's yard, tearing their yard, we're tying to a meter that could be 75 years old, it's way out of compliance and how do we address that? And then on top of that, we have to deal with telecoms. We don't just put our stuff in, we got, we got to make sure our roof is in and the capital is in. And so that really makes the project complex. Facility projects, it's truly, the challenge of those is just the right way and we have a place to do it. Once those get going, they're typically pretty fast. So that's the scoping side of the project, obviously, that the more components are scoped, the more complex it's going to be. Then you've got to look at the project factors. What else is going to impact that project? Is it mandated? When you look at our CIP, one of the big ones is, double tap, CIP will be our wastewater treatment plant. It's TCQ is going to mandate at a certain point, we've got to start the design on a treatment plant. So when that occurs, you've got to keep that schedule moving forward. You have life cycles. You know, you might have a project requiring, they want to get those turned over at a certain year because they meet the, the end of their life cycle. Project partners is an interesting one because depending on who your partner is, will depend on how quickly or slowly that project goes. We do a lot of projects with Hays County, Texas Dot and Texas State University. If they're in the drive sheet, they're dictating that schedule, we've got to have the money and the plan ready to go when they say. If we're a private schedule and we have a little flexibility, we can push or delay projects out. But the challenge is also, we've got to agree on what we're going to do with these folks. We've got to get those agreements in place and that can take six, 12 months just before we start the project to make sure we're all on the same page about what we're doing. Grant funded projects are a challenge because a lot of times they have stuff that we have to do that impact the schedule and they dictate the order that we do things. So an example of that would be, we get some campbell money to replace the sidewalk and hoppings. Well, I can't even start the design until I get an agreement with Texas Dot. The agreement takes six to 12 months to get done. So if I didn't have this grant money, I could start a lot sooner, but that month would put some extra provision of the tax I have to do and it adds costs because there's some stuff that I could do that's out the grant. I'm still going to check those boxes and that I have to do, but they have a lot more boxes I have to check and a lot more effort. So it's typically anywhere from 20, 25% of orders. And I thought, when you have this grant funded projects. Is the project underway? We want to finish what we started. So we don't want to sit there and start all these projects until we get done with what we're actually moving forward. Multi-funded, the challenge of those is if you have a project that is four funds and let's say three of those funds are good, but stormwater is struggling, you might not be able to move or fund it forward because you don't have the stormwater funds to fund it. So it's going to, the more funds are involved, the more complex it's going to impact the timing and schedule. Utility conflicts, these telecom companies, I mean, they might, imagine calling to come out and install cable at your house. It's even worse when we need to move cable and rope. It's, you cannot get them to respond to call and you cannot get them out there. And so we have to build in six to 12 months of our schedule if we have to move these external utilities. On top of that, we've got to get our design far enough along to give them a clear spot to move. Because if we don't say we'd like to go, we want to make sure they don't move to where we need that space. So we've got to get our design along, then we create them, give them time to move, then we do our work. Right-of-way acquisitions, that becomes a challenge when you have a resident that are probably doesn't want to work with it. They don't, they, they force you to go to implement the main and that could easily add six to 12 months to your schedule. And then staff workload, you know, we have a lot of projects that we want to keep going and then the project in design, you can typically slow it down or speed it up, but once you start construction, you can't stop. You've got to keep your focus on that and deal with those issues as they come up, when they come up. So what does this mean? You add it all together. The more scope, more project factors, the higher the complexity. The more complex, the longer it takes, the more it's going to cost. So when you come to me and say, hey, build this water main, just a water main out in the middle of nowhere, I'll say, sure, think about two years. You come to me and say, I want a project, water wastewater, stormwater, underground electric, I want to grant fund it, I want some right-of-way, have a lot of utility conflicts, I'm going to say, come. That's going to be about eight, eight, 10 years, you know? So it's, it's all those factors add up to take the time alone. So let's talk about the debt sale. When we take the CIP to council in September, we're saying, hey, we think we're going to spend X amount, that was $50 million to add between doing it. But then about six to nine months later, we're going to come back and say, well, we're going to sell a little bit less than that, or sometimes a little bit more, but we averaged about $33 million. And what happened is between that six to nine month window, things changed. Those project factors we just talked about impacted projects. We have, for example, the design did not account for a gas main. Now I have to bring in this gas main, so now I don't need the money right now, so I'm going to wait till next year, get that design, that utility conflict addressed. Or for example, you look right there in 2021, we had a big spike that's blue, which is approved, that was the ARWA money. We weren't ready to spend that money in 2021, so what do we do? We deferred it, we waited. That's why you see in 2022, that red, which was like the debt sale, has a spike because that's when we sold the debt sale for the ARWA project. So what I want to do now is try and link the CIP to the budget. It's really similar for each fund, so I'm going to walk through the stormwater fund, which is probably the most simplest fund that we deal with. And so the key point, I'm going to say it now, I'm going to say it later. When I approve the CIP, I say, I, you approve the CIP, we are, it is going to impact next year's budget. The CIP does not impact this year's budget, it impacts next, and that's 13 months from now. And so what you'll see is we'll take the CIP and the council approve it in September. And then in January, finance, John and his team, they're going to close the books. That's a key point and I'll explain that here in a minute. And then the spring, we'll prepare the debt sale, which will go to council, say, what we want to sell debt, what we can cancel, we're going to cash fund all that good stuff. And then we'll do the debt sale in the summer and the first payment actually hits in October of next year. So when we approve this CIP, we're going to start, when we submit the CIP to council approval, we'll do that in September with the budget. You'll see that colorful spreadsheet we always have and then, and then the spreadsheet, the bar charts, you have a budget. Right good analogy here is going to be a house, you know, it's kind of like you're going, you're getting pre-approved, right? I think I want to buy a $50 million home in September. I don't know that it's going to be 50, but I've looked at my budgets and I can, I, I recorded it. I don't want to have someone put down on it all, but you know, I, I think this is where it's going to be, so let me do a little bit of looking, are you good? They say, you're good. All right. So then we become and we present the debt sale in spring. So what happens between spring and September, when we send the list and we're sending the debt sale? John and his team have closed the books on the finance. They've gone through and they spound a little bit of extra cash that was left over from the budget. We went through, hey, this is an impact B project, or these projects got deferred. So this is kind of like the equivalent of a found house, I know the amount. One is bad for 50, but I got 33, I want a $33 million home. And, and so you can see here, so what happened? Well, like this project, uh, let's see, Castle Forest, that's, that's not quite ready to go, you know? So I want to defer it till next year. You've got the Briar Ridge River Bridge, well, we got, we don't need that 1.2 million because we've got water development board money. So we're able to drop that off the books completely and fund it with the water development board. You've got projects like the Kingwood Sherwood, we canceled that project because Texas Dot came through and they told us, hey, we're going to widen right of way. This project, anything that you hear is going to get wiped out with this project. So we said, let's just cancel, we'll come back after Texas Dot does their project. So that's what this list does. It tells you what was approved, what we're going to move forward on the debt sale, what was deferred or funded otherwise. So then you look at the budget. Where is that? This is actually like, hey, we closed on the loan on the house, we sold it, your first payment is going to be in 60 days. Well, we close on the summer, our first payment is going to be in next budget. And that payment is captured here in your budget services. So again, the key takeaway is the first payment of the 22 CIP is going to hit the 23 budget, the next year's budget. So I'll pause there for questions if there are any.
I don't have a question, but this is like really easy to understand, so I appreciate the.
That's the whole. Appreciate it. All right, I'll keep going then. So let's dive into each fund a little bit more. And again, I'm going to, I'm going to go in the reverse work of John because I went from like, he's just going to the hardest. He went from the hardest to easier. Historically, since 2017, we've averaged about $7 million. But we're about way coming. You see that? We don't always know exactly what we can spend when we look at the debt models. You know, we're, we're thinking it's about $6 million, but it could be a little less reward depending on what happens throughout the years before. But when you look at our current levels, we cannot support anything above that red line. And really, anything below that line, it's going to require a rating. Just when you look at how underfunded this part, this fund is, that's really the only way to do it. Well, I shouldn't say that only, John's got some ideas, I'll throw out to you later. So we have our front stormwater fund. When you look at significant projects, you've got the Bishop Bellman, we've got about $6.5 million planned for that one. Sunset Acres, we already spent, you know, $7, $7.5 million, that's really, most of that was going towards Texas Dot to upsize, to the storm system on 35. But we still need another $11 million to finish that project. The Wallace Edition, we finished about two, that's $112 million project area. And the challenge is, we gain no debt capacity until 2028. So I'm going to say that about two, three, four times. And then, later, I'm going to go in more detail and try and explain that to you guys. But the key takeaway is really, we cannot support one of the $6 million average, plus or minus, moving forward without 6.5% rate increases. So let's talk about the water wastewater fund. We've been averaging about $27 million on that. And if you remember on the previous slide, the talk that showed the ARWA, the water expansion, those little spikes, those are those big spikes there on the left in the blue. On the right, our big spikes are going to be a wastewater treatment expansion. We've got all that water coming, we've got the rights working out, but now we've got to treat it. On top of that, our wastewater treatment plant needs some work. So those are, those are pretty much those big spikes on the right there. So significant projects, again, life's reasonable. We spent $120 million, our annual debt payment's at $7.3 million. Wastewater treatment plant, we have either got to expand or build a second plant. And we know that's coming, and it's going to be right around the corner, like the $20 to $30 million over there. Highway utility project, that's a $25 million project, get some services out to that part of town that we can't really serve right now. Sunset Acres, we're about $7 million. This is, this is just a water fund, this is not a D project, this is just one fund of many. And similar to the stormwater, we gain no debt capacity until 2028. Say this again, I'm going to say it one more time. So with the water wastewater, the rate increases for '24 is anticipated to cover basic operation and debt services. I will say, staff is working real hard to try and sell some of that excess water, and that will provide some additional debt capacity. It's in the works, I'm not 100% sure where it is, but it's, we're working on it. Electric fund, you know, we've been about $10, $10.7 million over the years, and then on the right, it's going to drop off a little bit. The big project there is the Houghton Substation, we've really got to figure out where we're going to stick that. But we're looking at about $8 million. We've got the Hilltop Substation expansion to three, and then Sunset Acres conversion. You know, that neighborhood, it's, it's got a bunch of overhead faults that are just deteriorating, and we've done the cost analysis and paid, we've mixed it worth sense to go underground there. So we're going to, we're going to move that underground with about $6.5 million. Third time, we gain no debt capacity until 2019, center stormwater.
I thought the electrical fund paid for itself.
Sorry?
I, I thought the electrical fund paid for itself.
The electrical fund pays for itself?
Yeah.
I'm not quite following the question.
From, from, cash, yeah.
They'll, they'll do some, they will sell debt, when we look at the debt, when we decide to look at it, it is debt funded, it works out right.
Yeah, I just thought that that was the one that...
Council member, we, we cash fund as many of our CIP as we can. But we actually have, have had for a number of years, more, more CIP projects on our books than what we can cash fund.
So that kind of goes with the thought, you know, we, we really, we anticipate a rate increase in '24. But again, it's, we've not had an increase, really, we had one in '22, but since then, eight years before that, there was not one. We should have did an increase last year, but based off of the data recommended, we did not do an increase. And really, the challenge there is gross spending in residential and not large commercial wherever those are.
And, and we do need everybody to use the microphone, just because I know that, right now, I don't hear this phone, we'll probably get it out. But just have everybody use the microphone, please, just so that we can make sure we capture all the questions.
And you have to hold it close enough where it doesn't work.
Yes.
All right, so general fund, most difficult fund of all. Historically, we've been at about $10.7 million. Like I said, we, and the staff has done a good job of kind of constraining our shows to that point. But there's a bad way of coming, that we can't even get anywhere close to that $10 million. So you can see there, that, you know, we're at 2026, we're at the $14 million. If, if we don't do, or with the bond election, a potential bond election would be another $122 million, which equals that $136 million. And so what that means is, we've got to figure out what we're going to do with those, about $122 million of the project. We either keep pushing it off, we need to talk about potential bond election. Significant projects in general fund. Significant non-bond project identified, animal shelter, $5.5 million, Sunset Acres, $9 million, Wallace Edition, five, Airport FM110, $2.2 million. So we've gone through, and we've looked at what we think might be a decent potential bond election. And those projects would be the fire station and training facilities, that's $47 million. City Hall, $80 million. Well, Free Park, we don't even have a clue. We, we've, we've got to do a master plan to decide what we think that should be. Purgatory Creek's $10 million, Gary Soft Falls, $2.5 million. And so, remember, we've been averaging about $10 million a year. Those, those numbers are not even close. And so what that means is, the debt law really tells us the bond election is really going to be required to support the CIP. So, CIP goals, we need to change our message, you know? In years past, we've always said, construction is going to start in the year X, Y, and Z, based off what the CIP says. We need to be more transparent with the public, say, we're going to start when construction is available. We won't start this year if all things go well, but reality, we expect changes in time. The funding's not there to say that, those schedules are going to work. We're going to aggressively pursue grant, alternative funding for projects. A lot of the timing of projects is going to be in a long grant funding, they usually have, when you go for a grant, they'll typically say, when you need to start construction or start some task. And we're looking to pursue grants valued at $1 million above for CIP projects. You know, a lot of that has to do with the extra costs, so I might get a million dollars, or we might get a million dollars. But in reality, there's an extra cost to get that money, and so it might be more closer to $500 when it's all said and done. Best of all, the fees and things you've got to get, just to get that free money. So we, we've kind of settled at about $1 million when the CIP makes the most sense. It's not all grant funding, it's just the CIP, the big stuff. And we're going to use impact fees and tourist funding as alternative funding sources. I know the highway utility project's going to be eating up those impact fees and using that most of the time, and we're going to go after some water development board money as well. So we, I mean, right now, we've, I think in the last month, the engineering department alone has probably submitted about five or six grant applications, trying to help offset some of this cost. We are, I'll say that, we're working with Happen Associates, they have a grant funding, like, report if you will, that's, that's probably coming in the next few weeks. We'll make sure to get you all the copy of that as well, that kind of, kind of guided us on those projects, that we really should pursue the grant funding alternatives. And we need to play for a future bond election. We, we know that tax increases are really going to be necessary to fund these projects. The CIP timing will revise to reflect a potential bond election. So it just means, we don't have to move forward with it, but we've just got to know so we can move things according to CIP. Because if you look at our CIP, we're really focusing on the next year. We want to get to the point where the next three to five years is realistic and doable. And there are just so many unknowns right now, we can't do that, so. CIP challenges, utility debt loss. Our debt does not drop off until '28, '29, I keep saying that, and I promise you I'm going to explain that. Really, apparently, rate increases are the only way to fund the new debt, construction costs. Typically, we use a 5% increase here, inflation. The number of percent, 7% to 10%, my observations, from my point of view, is this closer to 50% than it's going to be. And so, I, you know, it's just, when you look at the number, depending, every person or every data resource you look at pulls some different numbers. So these numbers, they're, they're pretty high. Project scopes are becoming more complex. As I said, when you do a drainage project, it's not just a drainage project, there's a lot of other stuff that has to be moved to get that going. And these neighborhood projects, they're becoming so big, they're starting to become costly everywhere. There it is. Let's talk about what I need to say, debt, kind of falling off. So typically, we try to add new debt as old debt falls off. So this, what this is, is all our debt payments on our stormwater fund until 2041. And so it's really like 15, 10 or 15 different moments, if you will, stacked on each other. So that, where it jumps up, that's debt we added, our last CIP, or our last debt cell. Where it stays flat, what that means is, our debt payment does not change. We're going to have that same debt payment for the next five years or so. And when it goes down, that's debt falling off, we've gained some capacity. So.
This is stormwater only?
This is stormwater only. That flat line means debt payments do not change. Debt falling off means more debt capacity. To kind of give you, put that in context, $80,000 in debt reduction equals about $1 million worth of the CIP. It's kind of like you pay for a car, you know, you don't, you don't buy a $20 car. They'll tell you it's like roughly $20 for every $1,000, so it's kind of the now that we're doing here. $80,000 of debt means we can typically fund $1 million worth of the CIP. So if you look a little bit closer, there's that 2018 or 2028, our debt reduces by about $500,000. What that means is, we can quit 20, about $6.5 million or $27 CIP without changing our debt bank, but it stays the same. For 2031, we lose nearly $900,000 debt falls off, which equates to about $11 million in our 2030 CIP. So that's what we mean when we say, debt's not falling off, debt capacity. Inflation. So this, this is, if you look on the internet, it tells you what it's supposed to be. You know, like I said, we use about 5% on each, our job, and you can see, they're hovering about 3%. It seems to be the average on this chart, and this jumps up there, because of COVID, about nearly 10 and 7%. I will tell you, the estimates I'm getting back from engineers, pre-COVID have gone up 50%. And the bid we advertised in the last, let's say, six months, are saying that's probably, it's about a 30 to 40% increase since 2019. So this, these numbers say 44.6%. My observations, which I don't have the data to back it up other than it's in my brain, are saying it's, it's a little bit higher than that. So actually a lot higher than that. So, CIP strategies, how can we fund this stuff? Well, we can increase rates, that's, we've done that in the past, and that's, that's an option. We can do bond election, and what that will do is, that will really just assist with general stormwater funds. We can delay projects past 2028 when debt starts falling off. You know, we'd ideally, we'd keep projects in design, keep them in, and we'll keep pursuing grant funding. We can reduce scope of CIP projects, you know, instead of bringing up an entire neighborhood, maybe we just do that relief project. Or what, how we just break these into multiple phases and spread it out over several years? I mean, we've done that on Sunset Acres and Wallace Edition are great examples of doing that, we just can't fund it all in this year, so we have to break up into smaller projects and spread them out. And then this road impact fee, you know, we're doing a transportation management overlay, we can update, we can evaluate the need to add a road impact fee. And what that is, it's paid by new development to offset the general fund. It only, the key is though, it only funds new roads or widen the existing roads. So that's the challenge in the last type of penetration management, there's not a whole lot of new roads that we can use to fund these impact fees. But we can look into that for sure, moving forward. It does not fund maintenance or reconstruction of existing roads. All right, questions?
Who did you say that may see road?
Microphone?
Apologies, I was right. Uh, who did you say that, who pays the road impact fees? Who would pay?
It'd be the new development. Just like on the water wastewater, where you put a meter, that property, the development pays for that impact fee, the stormwater, so the storm on the roadside would be the same thing. It would be not the existing systems, the new ones.
Yeah, I remember we talked about this maybe three years ago, and there was an idea that the mayor or someone...
Actually, I, that's what I was going to ask, I think it's different from what he's talking about, I'm not sure.
It's not the street maintenance fee, that's what we talked about.
Yeah, we...
That was what we all talked about a few years ago.
Yeah, we said no to that, but then we had another idea of charging, because we know that construction trucks tear up our streets so much. So when new construction comes in, the apartment complex, new huge business or whatever. And what he had asked was about a road use fee, I may not be explaining it right. But a new fee that they will charge, and it would be kind of like the number of times those trucks use our streets by mile. Because when they're working with their subs and they're figuring out supplies, I think they pretty well know what it's going to take, how many trips, how far it's going to be. And we just calculate all that, and we set up per mile costs, so that whenever we have to go back and redo that road after they're gone, probably won't pay fully for it, but we will have some more money in our road project. Is that the same as what you're talking about? I didn't think so. And we asked, whenever it was that we said no to that maintenance fee, we asked that this be looked into, has, have folks had time to do that yet? Because that's income, and we, we're not always jumping on these opportunities to bring in more money. We have to spend a lot of money, but when we have opportunities to bring in more money, it's good that we do it as quick as we can. So, Mr. Reyes, is that something that somebody's looking at or could look at? Or I can ask council again, but I think we said we liked that idea before.
Yeah, that's what I was talking about.
That's, that's what I thought.
Yes, ma'am. And I know that there was something you and I talked about recently, and we talked about it a little bit at the director's team, and it's, it's just something we need to research and see what we can do, what we can't do in terms of adding another fee to developers when they come in and are doing a construction project, so that we can make sure that we are recouping some of the costs that the city then occurs for having redo roadways and things like that, based on their, their truck traffic.
Right, and it goes with something that I think we all agree with, I know Mr. Gonzalez and I have talked about forever, is we want the new development, and the people that are going to be making money off that new development, to pay for what they're doing, instead of our long-term taxpayers having to pay for it. So it's sticking with that philosophy.
Yes, thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, also, this spring, we're reworking our impact fees on the water side of it, to make sure that we're adequately recovering it. It's been a number of years since we reached out that, so just letting you know that we're going through that exercise this spring, we'll have to do so.
I'm glad to hear that, because every, every month, every six months, every year we go by, that we don't update them, that's, that's money left on the table that we don't ever see. So thank you for looking into that.
Any other questions?
Thank you, sir.
So we are done with that part of the project, of the presentation. Really, what we're wanting to understand and know from council at this point, we're not expecting a decision on whether to go forward with the bond election at this time, obviously. But just want to understand if there's an interest in talking about that further, either at budget policy or a later time, it could be a separate discussion. Just to, just to really focus on how we're going to look at the CIP, especially in relation to the projects that we have in the coming years. Because we need to figure out, what is going to be our strategy? What is going to be, how we get through these next few years? Do we delay projects past 2028 when debt starts to fall off? That would mean us going through and finishing everything that we have, but not taking on new things. We know that that would be a very difficult and challenging decision, because these are neighbors and neighborhoods that are expecting their projects, and they would be delayed. And so we just want to have the conversation with council to see if we want to do a more focused discussion on that element, as well as a potential bond election in the future. So, and I know Mr. Wegmiller's going to talk more about, and Mr. Locke are going to give you more about the debt side of that. And so you don't need to give us an answer or anything now, just want you all to look at that, and then just want to tee it up, that that may be a question that we ask you at the end of this, if you're just interested in having a further conversation. So, do we need a break here, or?
It's been 90 minutes, I think it's time to take a break. We'll go by this clock back here, this is 10:09. I'd like to start the meeting up again at 10:20.